Good evening, welcome to the July 8th workshop meeting for Pasco City Council. We have agendas available on the corner desk over here if you'd like to follow along with the agenda or more detailed council packet is available through the city's website. We also televise our meetings live on Charter Cable Channel 191 as well as through the city's website and also Facebook Live. And if you have any cell phones, I'd ask you to mute those so that the meeting isn't interrupted. And if you get a chance to speak with council, if you come to the podium up here and share your name, we'd be very appreciative for our record keeping. With housekeeping taken care of, and I believe since it is, it's also summer, we have some council members on vacation, including Mr. Martinez and Mr. Serrano. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alvarado.
Present.
Barajas.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Milm.
Present.
Watkins.
Here.
Five present, Mr. Mayor.
And if you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Workshop meeting tonight, so item four, well, excuse me, I gotta do number three, verbal reports from council members. Anybody attend a meeting or event that they wish to share with council? Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I had the honor and the privilege to play mayor again for the Fourth of July, and that was, of course, a wonderful experience. I mean, the way that Pasco and our community celebrates Fourth of July, especially the parade in the morning, just splendid. Had the opportunity to go to the car show down in Memorial Park as well, beautiful cars and great turnout for that as well, and then, of course, the wonderful, only safe and legal aerial fireworks in Pasco down at the stadium. So it was an awesome day. It was always a pleasure for me to be able to attend those things and just wonderful to see how the community helped celebrate our independence.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Mr. Milm.
Thank you, Mayor. I also enjoyed the parade and I had a great time also that night with Officer Guerrero. We did a police ride-along to see how our rules are taking effect, and it was pretty interesting going around my district and quite a lot. Anyway, I know Blanche had more of an exciting one, so I'll let her continue with it, but I do think it means a lot as council when we do police ride-alongs and get to know our community and our great police force, so thank you.
Ms. Barajas.
Yes, I too had the privilege of attending the parade. Again, it's great to see the community coming out and just having fun, having family fun. Great to see a lot of faces out there. And I did go to the, I did a ride-along, thank you for the Pasco, to the Pasco Police Department and staff that coordinated. Officer Pelsier was great, very enlightening. The section that I was at was actually Road 68, so yes, for everyone watching, we are keeping an eye out for all those illegal fireworks out there. We did issue out some citations, well, he did.
[laughter]
And there's a lot of education definitely that needs to be done, and definitely the officer did a great job in doing that piece and issuing warnings. Great to see the community come together, and even though we did give out tickets, we did not have anybody too upset about it. That's my share. Thank you.
And my understanding too, that was your first ride-along?
My first ride-along, yes, and definitely not the last.
And to do it on the Fourth of July, I'm sure was a very interesting experience.
It was very interesting to see that point of view, yes.
Thank you. And any other council members? Hearing none, I will, or we will move on, and we're gonna go to Section 4 on the agenda. 4A, the first item is related to a presentation for supportive housing model. We have an agenda report and opening comments by Mr. Zabel.
Good evening, Mayor and council, and thank you. Council recall, about a year ago, actually a little bit more than a year ago, we had a pretty thorough briefing by representatives of a number of our community housing resource partners in the community. And one of the things I think that we left that meeting with is there is a segment of folks out there that we don't have a resource with, resource for, and that is the absence of low-barrier housing. And those are folks that, you know, could be suffering from mental illness or perhaps addictions or physical illness that may preclude them from being able to qualify for some of the other programs. And so the Hot Spotters Program over the past year or so has been evaluating the issue, looking at different alternatives out there, looking at different programs, and happened to come in contact with Catholic Charities of Eastern Washington, which has a couple supportive housing models along this lines up in Spokane. Matter of fact, when we were at the AWC conference, Councilmember Alvarado, Councilmember Barajas, and I were able to tour one of those facilities, and we left us definitely with a favorable impression of the facility itself and how it was managed. And having that discussion, we had talked with Vice President of Housing for Catholic Charities Eastern Washington, Jonathan Malahan. He's here tonight to talk to council a little bit about, and provide an overview of supportive their supportive housing model and how it's been implemented in Spokane.
And with that, good to see you, sir from Spokane, Jonathan. Good to see you this evening.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor Watkins, and members of the council. I really appreciate you making some time tonight for this conversation. It's really critical to the most vulnerable in the community. The housing I'm here to talk about tonight, just to introduce it, really does serve those with the highest barriers to housing. These are not people that have just been down on their lock lost a job and have recently become homeless. The individuals that we seek to serve with this model are chronically homeless. They have the highest needs. They have a qualifying disability and have been homeless for over 12 months. So these are people that are, you're currently serving in your community through emergency systems and emergency responses, which is a really inexpensive and really ineffective way to do that. I don't mean that as a criticism of your community, that's true across the nation by and large. And in Spokane, we've built this model based off of best practices around the country, and we've seen a 21% decline in chronic homelessness in Spokane since this model was first implemented. So to give you a little bit about Catholic charities here, our mission is to provide dignity to the most vulnerable across Eastern Washington. We do that through 13 different programs. We serve 72,000 people a year. The program I'm talking to you about tonight serves about 325 individuals and families throughout Eastern Washington. Fifty of those are in Walla Walla and the remainder are in Spokane and the Spokane greater area. We have 100 additional units of this form of housing opening in 2020, and we finance them primarily through a tool called Low Income Housing Tax Credits. And Low Income Housing Tax Credits are a federally authorized program. They were created in the Tax Reform Act of 1986. They allow for large corporations to invest in affordable housing, and through that investment, they get a return in their taxes for 10 years, and they also get the benefit of writing down the depreciation of the asset from their taxes. So we see that the average return for investors is about 17%, and the average default on a project, the default rate on projects across the nation for this form of financing is less than 1/10 of 1%. So it's a very stable program. We've been able to be successful in creating new housing and rehabbing existing housing using both 9% and 4% tax credits. Just so you know, there is a 9% program and a 4% program. Tonight I'm talking about a project that would use the 9% program, and that 9% figure really refers to the amount of tax breaks that the corporation would receive as the investor. We also support our programs with a variety of operational funding subsidies, primarily for the model we have in Spokane. Those are tenant-based and project-based Section 8 housing vouchers. That program has residents paying 30% of their income regardless of what that income is towards their rent, and the remainder of that market rate rent is actually covered by HUD or through a HUD pass-through agency. So Housing First, what does that mean? That's a term that many of us have heard but may not be very familiar with the details. Housing First is not just giving someone housing. Low-barrier housing is critical, and Housing First specifically refers to a model of low-barrier housing that has highly integrative supportive services, where you have clinically trained professionals there to provide care for the very vulnerable people who are living in those units. That's what Catholic charities provides, and we would propose building some permanent supportive housing in, using the Housing First model in your community to help address the need. And I know that the, I believe the market rate study for the project was included in the packet. You can read that at your leisure. I know that Councilman Maloney has already done so. It goes into some more of the details of that need. It's a pretty clear need. We are not concerned about filling a building of 50 units in the community, but we certainly wanna make sure we're having conversations with the community upfront so that we're meeting the needs that you see as well. I mentioned that we're serving chronically homeless individuals in these properties and what those individuals would have experienced in their life. The average stay in homelessness in Spokane prior to someone going into these properties is 10 years. So you imagine someone who's been homeless for 10 years and then they are put into an apartment, that is a blessing, and it's something that we see transformation in their personal wellness when they are housed. So a little bit about what those, the other characteristics of those individuals on the streets. Those individuals are going to have a mental illness or another disability. Sometimes it is also, comes along with what we would call dual diagnosis of a substance abuse disorder as well. But we shouldn't just dismiss everyone in these circumstances as being addicted to drugs. Many of these individuals are not substance abusers and, or suffering from substance abuse disorder, and they have just become homeless through mental illness. I previously worked for the city of Spokane, and in my role as part of the city of Spokane, I attended the funerals of people who were homeless in our community and passed away when they were homeless. And that was something that I did to help me stay connected to the families and those individuals and that experience, but also as a reminder of what was at stake. And I will tell you something, when I went to those funerals, I met people that were a lot like me. I heard stories of their loved ones who came from great families that had, you know, maybe not exorbitant, but certainly means to support each other. And through mental illness and through years of trial and error and trying to help their family member, bridges were burned and the family did the only thing that they reasonably could do to protect themselves and move forward in life and say, "I can no longer be, you know, your support here." And unfortunately, what that leads to too often is a slow deterioration on the streets of our communities, and that's what I would see. So it's a sad state that there is a segment of our population through no fault of their own that can be struck down by mental illness or some other circumstances and not have a resource that can help them heal. This housing does heal people, and we do that because we have highly integrated supportive services onsite in our housing. We fund that in a variety of means, including McKinney Vento, which might, you might have also heard, referred to as CFC dollars here. We have some local and state grant fundings through local human services dollars and consolidated housing, excuse me, CHG or Consolidated Homelessness Grant Dollars through the state. We are now using another program that the state has created. This is the Medicaid Expansion Program known as foundational community supports. We use that to fund a 1 to 15 case manager ratio in our buildings to provide peer supports. Peer supports are individuals who have lived experiences homelessness, and they come into our buildings and they help develop meaningful trusting relationships with our residents. So here's something you should know about the experience of homelessness, it's incredibly isolating. And when you're homeless, you know, I hear people say a lot, "Boy, I know, I've talked to people who are homeless on the streets, they've chosen to be homeless." And when I hear that, I hear someone taking a defensive position. When I hear someone say, "I'm choosing to be homeless," what I'm hearing is them saying, "I am choosing to protect myself from another failure, from another letdown." If you're in that state, you've been let down in so many cases, you've had government systems fail you, you've had family systems not work for you, you've had relationships be broken. That is definitely an isolating and scary place to be. So when we bring someone into our housing, we have to do a lot of work to help rebuild a level of trust. And having someone who has lived experience in homelessness be there to say, "I've been there, I understand, I know what you're going through, and I'm here to help," is truly something that allows for us then to connect that individual with the professional services that we provide through our clinically trained staff. We have behaviorally, excuse me, we have duly licensed behavioral health and substance abuse disorder professionals in our properties. We do recognize that some of the residents that come to us are struggling with substance abuse disorder, and it's important that we help them recover from that illness. And we have to do that using professionals who are trained in effective recovery techniques. We do bill back to Medicaid and Medicare for residents who are eligible, and we have a counseling service in addition to those onsite services that we refer our residents to, and we do have some revenue that comes from that billing mechanism as well. So it's really important to be upfront about what this housing is. It is not a panacea to homelessness. As your city manager just noted, you have some really amazing services in your community, and you have a gap here that serves chronically homeless individuals. This housing is intended for those individuals. It does not mean that your affordable housing needs or your other populations don't still need to be aggressively served in the community. So we wanna be upfront as to what you could expect if some of this housing was built in the city of Pasco. You would see a decrease in the number of chronically homeless individuals in your community. You would see a decrease of their utilization on emergency services. You'd see an increase in their wellness, and most importantly to Catholic charities, you'd see an increase in their dignity. We believe that people deserve the dignity of housing, and we provide that housing through grace, which is unearned. That grace is extended, and then we have accountability for our residents, because Catholic social teaching doesn't just say that you deserve the dignity of housing, it also says that you have an accountability to yourself and your community. And we do that in the form of good neighbor agreements. We ask our residents to create a safe environment for themselves and our neighbors, and when they struggle and we see that they're not being successful with those expectations, we do follow up, and our property managers and our case managers and our supportive service staff onsite have conversations, and we give them a 10-day notice to comply or vacate, which sounds harsh, but it's a tool that helps us move people towards changes in their lives. When they've had a couple of slip-ups, we actually move to what is known as a risk-to-tenancy agreement, and if any of you are in the landlord business, you might have heard of that tool before. That's an agreement that's, that we're able to say, as a condition of your continued housing here, now these are the steps we're gonna take to engage you in services. And that is a highly effective tool for people who are struggling to meet the expectations of the community that we seek to create. I do wanna talk a little bit about the numbers. We use an assessment tool called the SPEDAT. You don't really need to be familiar with the SPEDAT other than to know that it is the internationally-used model for assessing the level of someone's need, that we call it their acuity. High scores in the SPEDAT mean high reliance on services. That would mean that someone is really struggling, they've got a lot of barriers to housing, that they're in a really bad state. What we track in our housing is the, someone's level of need when they move in using their SPEDAT score, and then we take that level of need and we measure it every three months so that we can see, how are we impacting this individual? Are we doing what we've set out to do, and that is to improve their lives? This is a harm reduction model, and that's important to call out. The harm reduction is different than like a transitional housing model where you might say, where someone is, has lost their job, we're gonna give them some temporary support, and then they're gonna be self-sustaining again in the future. We do not expect that everyone in this housing will be self-sustainable in the future. They are so ill, and they have so many barriers to being self-sustaining, that we do expect for some of them, this is a long-term housing solution. We see about 10% of our residents in buildings in Spokane ready to graduate or move on to another form of housing, but that's not the case for most of the residents we have. And I can't stress enough, that's not for lack of their own capacity or willingness to wanna change their lives and do good things. They meet their full potential in their own way, but their full potential may not be having a job that pays enough money that covers their living expenses like many of other clients that we serve in other housing. So we see after 12 months in our housing, a 32% decrease in residents' SPEDAT scores. And what does that mean? Well, that means, for example, we took a random sampling of our residents for the purpose of this presentation today, and we, one of the scoring criteria in SPEDAT is, what is your reliance on emergency services? And you can score between 4 and 0 on that scale. If you score a 4, you're gonna have had more than nine interactions with emergency services in the last 180 days. If you score 3, it would be between nine and three, excuse me, nine and four interactions with emergency services over the last 180 days. What we see in this random sampling we took was a general reduction from a score of 3 to a score of 1, which would mean less than one contact in a six-month period. So you're talking about significant reductions in your, in your highest utilizers of emergency services. That doesn't mean they don't still use emergency services. There are many calls for service to our properties in Spokane, and that those calls are less than the aggregate calls the same population would have required had they not been living in stable housing in the year prior to their housing. Case studies in Seattle with a population of 91 participants showed a decrease in emergency response costs between $26,000 and $63,000 per year. We saw a similar decrease in Spokane on a smaller case study of about seven individuals of about $80,000 per year, reduced reliance on services. We do have extreme anecdotal examples where people in their previous 12 months used 63 visits to the emergency room, and in their following 12 months were zero. But I didn't include those today because they're great stories, those stories will be present here in Pasco, but the average is not so phenomenal. And I wanna make sure all of our expectations are in the right place. A similar case study in LA gave maybe a more sober expectation of the return you get on this form of housing. They found in a larger case study that every dollar invested in Housing First reaped about a $1.20 return, which is certainly, you know, I'd be happy to make that investment in my own personal finances, but it's, you sometimes hear Housing First branded as the end-all-be-all of housing, and I, you know, it is a great thing. It is not the only solution that we need in any community. So I don't wanna keep droning on at you, and I know that a couple of you have the opportunity to tour one of our facilities. You're all welcome to visit Spokane and tour one of our facilities and see this hands-on. We love to share about our model. I do wanna say that Catholic charities provides 1,300 units of housing across Eastern Washington. We, and I noted we serve 72,000 people, we spend a lot of time talking about this population because they are the most vulnerable, and that's, our faith calls us to focus on those individuals. But we also serve in your community through serving seniors in affordable housing, and if not this opportunity for affordable housing, Catholic charities is here in the long run to be a partner to your community in addressing these needs.
And just so help me, because maybe I'm conflating another entity with Word Catholic in it, but I recall in Pasco, some development related to some Catholic organization. Is that not, are you familiar with that?
We do have two farmworker properties in Pasco, so that may be what you're referring to.
So there's an affiliation of some sort, just vis-à-vis the Catholic itself?
Yeah, all of our properties, even though they would be Catholic charities branded, are formed as single-asset LLCs. So they, you know, often people know them as, you know, Guadalupe Haven or something along those lines. They don't know them as a Catholic charities property.
Other questions, discussion? Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much for coming down and giving this presentation. I really appreciate it. So I guess I'll share a little bit about my personal thoughts on this. When I was down in Denver for the All-America City Delegation, I had a chance to talk with Becky Gross and Captain Michelle Crowley about some of these issues, especially as they relate to our Hot Spotters Program, which we were, one of our focuses in our presentation. And I just wanna bring your attention to page 65 of the homelessness profile and the attachment to the agenda report. And in that, Mrs. Gross says, "There's a strong need for permanent supportive housing with wraparound services, especially low-barrier housing for the chronically homeless." And I guess from my perspective, this seems very supportive on some of the programs that we're already putting in place, like the Hot Spotters Program, that we're already investing in, that we're already seeing the sort of both human and cost improvements that one would really hope for out of a, out of a community. And so I'm supportive of this model. I've read about some of this model, and I appreciate you making sure that we're staying down to earth. I saw some of the initial Housing First models represent some numbers that seemed somewhat inflated, and I appreciate you making sure to cite actual case studies and reports indicating that maybe it's good, it's not the only thing. So my question is actually, I'm gonna direct to staff, if you don't mind. What would the city's role be in this if this were to come to our city? Do we have a role? What, how does this, as city council, other than being generally interested in this, what would we do?
Well, you kinda hit the nail on the head there as far as why you're hearing about it tonight, is, you know, we anticipated some interest in it. We've been talking to Catholic parries through the Hot Spoter Program and felt it was timely, given our presentation last year, to come and fill this one gap and talk to you a little bit about it. There's not really a role for the city per se. I mean, Catholic charities, from what we saw, and you know, Jonathan, please feel free to jump up and share, but I think they demonstrated, at least during the time they've been in operation, a good partnership with the city, but it's more of a supportive one. City shows up if there's issues, just like they would at any other apartment facility or residential home for that matter. And there's not a, not a huge amount of financial support, certainly not in the operations. Obviously, they'd have to go through the permitting process to build something at the city, within the city limits. That would, you know, our current zoning does allow for this type of facility. It takes, I think, a special permit? Yeah, a conditional use permit. But beyond that, you know, it's an application to go to the hearing examiner and, because it's a conditional use permit. And we'd have an opportunity to consider conditions, given its special status, it's not an outright zoned use. And that would be it. Like I said, we just have an ongoing partnership like we would with any other significant multi-family residential unit.
A follow-up on that, the Section 8 housing vouchers. We have an existing program and we're using, and we, I don't recall who exactly distributes the vouchers within our community, but obviously wouldn't be getting more vouchers if this were to come into our, would, does that, how would that play out?
Yeah, I mean, the city doesn't necessarily get involved with the distribution of those things, and I don't know if Rick is comfortable with that, but I think that's a, more a role the county is doing right now. They have the money flowing through them, they have the statutory authority, and that's their program, but...
No, that's correct. The Pasco Franklin County Housing Authority distributes the vouchers, and it's probably not a given that we would be receiving more vouchers as a result of any program, actually.
Excellent. So I guess I'll just make the statement that I'm generally supportive of these sort of efforts, and I'm excited to see a private organization wanting to come in and do some awesome things for our community, so I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much. Right there. I believe it's Mr. Mahong? Is that, is that your name?
Malahan.
Malahan, okay. Apologies. For your presentation, I certainly appreciate, you know, you had promised us a, when we came and visited, you had promised us a pretty well put-together market study, and you delivered on that very well, and so it's very, I think it's very encouraging for me to see that there are, in the Northwest, organizations that are focused in this segment. I think it's very, having come from the affordable housing industry myself, you know, coming to this region, I felt that there was definitely a gap that we, you know, because of what we perceive to be affordable as a region, is becoming less and less the case in the region as far as housing. And so, and very, very excited, and I had heard about a developer in the Northwest was able to put these kind of projects together, which are no small feat of this kind of, I guess where I'm getting at, is I'm very, very supportive of this, but I definitely would love to see more of this in the Northwest. And to your knowledge, is there perhaps some cities that have put together some, some form of partnerships to create incentives to bring these kind of developers like yourself?
Well, I, you know, so I'm biased, for my former employer was the city of Spokane, but the city of Spokane did use some state programs to create a multifamily tax exemption program. That doesn't necessarily help with these properties because they seek a tax exemption through different means, but we did see some great success there. At the, at the end of the day, creating the market environment where developers like myself can come in and not have barriers for, you know, land use and, you know, your dimensional standards in your single family, those are all things that we look at really closely when we say, "Can we make a project pencil in your community?" Because this, this housing is not inexpensive to build, and those things add up. Those things add up in project costs and needs for us, so we would encourage you always to look at your building requirements and your zoning code.
Thank you. And a follow-up to, a couple of points, and I think that the point about the potential for... for filling probably a small but tangible and specific gap in the, in providing increasing housing opportunities and putting that in context, I appreciate what seems to be a very refined, realistic perspective that you're sharing with us and that's encouraging. And also, I, besides the statutory things that maybe a city might do, and certainly we're interested in council members in helping bridge that gap, I would imagine also your organization is interesting to be welcome in a community. And so there's probably a fair amount of outreach of wherever one of these does go, it wants to be a welcome neighbor and answer any of the questions from those that might live nearby. And I would hope and imagine that you would be open to any of that kind of conversation that might happen.
Absolutely. You've got some great hoteliers here in your community, so I'll be down here as much as I possibly can and present for the community. It's a big part of our faith that we treat our neighbors well, and so we do intend to invest a lot of time with our neighbors wherever this project should go.
And then I'm going to ask too, because you were aware as well, it's not just Pasco. We do have the tri-cities community. Is this also something that your organization is interested in more than just Pasco or is Pasco where you're interested in a first project, so to speak?
So broadly speaking, the Catholic Charities family, including our sister organization that serves central Washington and the other two of the tri-cities, yes, this is a form of housing that is needed in all three. The diocese that we are part of in eastern Washington, the borders align with your city border. So our particular interest is in Pasco and we have a sister agency serving the other two cities that have the same capacity that we do to pull this off in those communities as well.
And similarly, you're probably going to be talking or familiarizing, introducing yourself to our community for these services similarly as Pasco?
Yeah, and so I'm working right now with your continuum of care providers, which is the kind of the federally mandated group of service providers in the community, and we're using that as a platform to make sure that we're integrating and being responsive to the local experts' view of what the needs are. And we're not making the assumption that a model that works in Spokane can be plunked down into Pasco and do the same thing, so it really needs to fit within your ecosystem of services and we're working with the C O C. to do that.
Okay. And of course, we're not, this is not one where we're doing something on the agenda for specific action, but if I think that the task tonight was introduction and familiarity, I think that you're getting a lot of nods which are yay, go forth, and we're liking what we see and we'd like to help as a city, I think, generally too.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate your time.
Okay. With that, then we are done with Section 4A. We're going to go on to Section 4B related, was there?
I just wanted to ask, how long from shuttle to occupancy?
If.
I appreciate it. From shuttle to occupancy is the question.
If we were to, all the stars align and we get site control and we get an allocation of housing trust fund dollars in this year's round and we get an allocation of low-income housing tax credits and we solve our need for operational funding, if all those things align, which is not impossible to do, we would begin construction in the late summer of 2020 and we would open ten months after that. So you could expect this to be opening in the early summer of 2021.
Thanks for the additional question from the field and we're going to then go on to the next agenda item, and that's Item 4B related to the Pasco School District 2018 Capital Facility Plan Update and Impact Fee Report. Introductory comments from Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Just very briefly, as a reminder, council considered the revised school district capital facility plan in May of 2018 and then most recently just this past June this year. And due to the amount of time that's transpired between that initial May 2018 consideration and now, the district will be requesting that they bring back a revised capital facility plan later this year in 2019 for your consideration. And would also like to take the opportunity to further explain how the formula is calculated for school impact fees and to further explain the SEPA-based strategy of requesting impact fees for those areas of the district that are outside the city limits. So there's a brief PowerPoint associated with this update and essentially the district will be at least hitting on those three main points and probably have an opportunity for questions.
And this evening, we're presentation by, from Pasco School District and you'll introduce yourself, ma'am. Good to see you.
Good evening. My name is Denise Stifarm. I'm with Pacifica Law Group and I have been working with the school district for about two years, reviewing matters related to school mitigation. I, obviously in the back of the room, you will see that the superintendent is here as well as the associate superintendent. So they're here to answer anything that might come up, but I'm going to try to walk through and anticipate some of your questions, but obviously be available for more after. So what I, Mr. White was, provided a good overview of what the PowerPoint will go through, and this is a bit of a refresher for those of you who saw it about a year ago, so we'll walk through that. But essentially, and this of course requires my ability to run the PowerPoint, there we go. So I just want to start by talking about why the city council even needs to think about the Pasco School District's capital facilities plan and school impact fees. And it all goes back to the fact that the Growth Management Act, when it was adopted in nineteen ninety, established the authority for school impact fees, but it limited the bodies who can assess school impact fees. And that is limited to cities and counties who need to collect those on behalf of school districts because school districts do not themselves have authority to assess school impact fees. In order to provide a basis for that request, should a city or county decide to do that, the school district needs to provide a capital facilities plan that meets the elements of the Growth Management Act and essentially provides a basis for the city to adopt that plan by reference as an element of, or excuse me, by reference into your own capital facilities element in your comprehensive plan. So the capital facilities plan largely aligns with what you see for your own city facilities in that capital facilities element. The school district first adopted a capital facilities plan with the intent to request school impact fees in 2011, that was following a community summit. City of Pasco then in 2012 adopted that first capital facilities plan along with a school impact fee ordinance. And as a part of that school impact fee ordinance, there's a requirement for a review at least every two years. So every two years, the district has been bringing an updated capital facilities plan with updated school impact fees to the city with the last plan adopted by the city in 2016. So your current comprehensive plan reflects the 2016 school district capital facilities plan. Again, as you know, we came in about a year ago with the 2018 update that is still sitting out there and your plan reflects the 2016 plan. As I mentioned, the components of the district's capital facilities plan align with what the Growth Management Act requires. And so the first item would be the review of the locally established service standards for the school districts. That's educational program standards. Those are adopted locally by the board to identify what is it that this district has decided it needs to provide education to its students. The important piece of this really kind of boils down to how many students can a school building serve? When you look at the number of students per classroom, the different program requirements that are in that school, and that then informs what is known as the capital facilities inventory. So following along the Growth Management Act requirement to identify all of the inventory currently in your system. Then the next step in the plan is looking at what do you anticipate needing over your six-year planning period? And we use a six-year planning period because that's what the Growth Management Act requires as a minimum. For school districts, that six-year minimum is a good standard to use because enrollment projections over a six-year timeline can be fairly reasonably predicted. Once you go out past six years, it gets a little bit more uncertain, which is one of the reasons why we do update the capital facilities plan regularly to catch up with those enrollment projections. But looking forward towards over that six-year period, what the district does is it looks to what it expects to see in terms of new students coming into the district and then it compares it to its existing inventory in order to identify what they anticipate they will need to add, if anything. And in this district, there's always been an anticipation of needing to add in order to support those new students and provide them a seat in the schools. And so that then translates to the financing plan. The identified district projects for capacity-related needs are identified in that financing plan along with the estimated costs and the estimated funding sources. Funding sources, of course, include any capital bonds or levies as well as any state funding that the district might expect to receive towards the project if they're eligible. Impact fees, if they reasonably anticipate they will receive them. Mitigation fees, if they reasonably anticipate that they will receive them. And any other funding that they might anticipate, but those three, first three buckets are the primary components. And then that financing plan then forms the basis for the school impact fee formula, which we'll talk about in more detail. Just touching really quickly on what is in the 2018 Capital Facilities Plan, the district has identified growth of about eight percent since 2012, which translates into more than twenty-one hundred students, and then projects that over the next six years through 2023, the end of the six-year planning period, there will be another three thousand students added to the district. And importantly, that growth is occurring and expected to occur at all three grade levels. The, obviously, the 2018 plan was prepared about a year ago, so it was looking at projections prepared at that time, and they're tracking fairly close to what those projections had anticipated. So that shows us that the growth is occurring at the rate that the district expected it to occur. In the 2018 Capital Facilities Plan, the district identified based upon their growth-related needs several projects to accommodate those needs and as well as accommodate existing needs in the district. And those included two new elementary schools, a new middle school and the expansion of Stevens Middle School, a new high school, a new comprehensive high school, some adjustments in portables across the district's facilities and then land acquisition. So all of this is the package that the district has planning for the future in terms of providing for growth-related needs. Now, all of these projects but for the high school were funded as a part of the 2017 bond that was approved by the voters. The high school is a project that was added in as for a future bond, but an identified need moving forward. So it's getting that information out into the public as quickly as possible through that 2018 Capital Facilities Plan. Moving back to talking about that school impact fee formula and the parameters, the school impact fee is a one-time charge. It's charged just to new residential development. New commercial development doesn't have students living in those facilities and so that's why residential development is where the fee is assessed. And the fee, and that reflects the intent to capture the impact on the school facilities from the fact that that new home or that new apartment is built. Importantly, the school impact fees can only be assessed and collected for capacity-related projects that are included in a capital facilities plan adopted as a part of the comprehensive plan. This comes directly from the Growth Management Act, and I just wanted to highlight that because you'll remember a few slides earlier, I talked about the projects that the district has identified in its 2018 plan. In the 2016 plan, the new middle school and the new high school were not identified projects. So in the plan that is currently within the city's comprehensive plan, we just have the two elementary schools that are impact fee eligible. Another component from state law is that you cannot use impact fees as a sole source of funding. There needs to be other funds, other local funds provided or other state funds. And then impact fees need to be expended within ten years of receipt. And then finally, one component that is, we'll spend a little bit more time on as well, is that state law does not set forth the impact fee formula. However, it provides the parameters under which that proportionate share needs to be calculated. And so the formula that is adopted as a part of your city ordinance is one that reflects nearly identically formulas that have been adopted by every other jurisdictions for school impact fees. And that formula originated in King County in nineteen ninety-one. It originated in King County because that was the first jurisdiction to adopt a school impact fee ordinance. That jurisdiction at that time brought together stakeholders, school districts, local jurisdictions and the development community to identify a formula that everyone agreed met the parameters of state law. Subsequent to that, the formula has been tested in administrative appeals and has survived those tests and, like I said, it's been replicated throughout the state. So what that formula does, again, it uses those growth-related facilities and costs as the first element. So it's looking at, for example, the total cost of the new elementary school. Then it identifies the cost per dwelling unit, and by doing that, it provides that proportionate share to the new development. And so the district takes what's called a student generation rate, and the student generation rate is based upon actual students generated by actual new development within the district within the last six years. So taking building permits, matching them to student addresses to see on average how many students are residing in new single-family homes and new multi-family homes. So looking at those two unit types differently because they are different. And then applying that student generation rate to the construction cost for the capacity project to determine that cost per dwelling unit. At that point, then, credits are applied against that cost per dwelling unit in two ways. First, there's a credit applied for any state funding that the district expects to receive towards that capacity project, and that's to ensure that the district isn't getting a bonus of some kind by having a development pay a full fee and then getting some of the money from the state. You need to recognize that you're getting that other funding. And then the second credit is probably the most important one. It's a credit for taxes that a new homeowner will pay towards the bond that will fund that new capacity project. And so that's intended so that there's not a double dip. You don't want someone paying for the same improvement twice. So you're recognizing that over an average period of time, they're going to be paying taxes towards that new home, or excuse me, towards those new projects, and you want to recognize that in the formula. Once you've applied those credits, we get to the unfunded need, which is then reduced by twenty-five percent, and that's pursuant to the city's ordinance. And then in addition to that, to date, the district's Board of Directors has made the decision to apply an additional discretionary discount in order to keep that fee even with what the city has adopted in the past. So there hasn't been any large jump in the fee. It's stayed consistent over time. The discretionary discount has not been significantly large in any way, but it does take it down just a bit from what the twenty-five percent discount would take it from. So all of that is reflected in this formula, which I know looks very complicated and on its own, unless you're working with it all the time, is difficult to decipher. But it really does go back to those points that I just walked through in terms of identifying that proportionate share per dwelling unit, applying the credits, taking the twenty-five percent discount and then that discretionary discount. And that gets us to the fees that are proposed in the 2018 Capital Facilities Plan, which are identical to the fees that you have in place based on the 2016 plan. One quick note, you'll see that obviously the two fees for the different unit types are very similar, and that is because in this district, there are very similar numbers of students residing in single-family homes as there are in multi-family homes. So there's not a big difference between the two. That could change over time. I've seen it happen in other districts where there's swings in different ways, and that's another reason why we update that capital facilities plan regularly. As Mr. White mentioned, the district has decided since we're into 2019, the data in the 2018 plan has started to slightly age. It's a good opportunity to update that plan. The good news is that it's not going to change significantly. There's the same growth-related needs, the same capacity projects planned, and so we'll just update those numbers to reflect current circumstances to make sure we're aligning with enrollment projections, update the student generation rates, and then plan to submit that to the city probably early fall of 2019. So now I'm going to move into, move away from capital facilities plan specific items and just talk a little bit about school impact fees under the Growth Management Act and then school mitigation fees assessed under SEPA. And obviously, I'm talking about this because as you know, the city has a school impact fee ordinance. Franklin County does not have a school impact fee ordinance despite the district's regular requests. And the, obviously, the authority for the two types of fees are different. One is under the Growth Management Act, one is under- One is under the Growth Management Act, one is under the State Environmental Policy Act. There's also some authority in the State Subdivision Act that couples with the SEPA authority. And, but the net effect of the fee is the same because it does look at what impact on the district results from new development. The applicability of each type of fee is also different, and this is really a key component. For, for school impact fees, the Growth Management Act was designed so that it would capture every new development unit. That was a recognized need, that if there's only one new home being built on an established lot, that still should provide mitigation for on public infrastructure. So if someone walks in, they're going to build just one, they just need one building permit, they're going to pay a school impact fee at the city of Pasco. However, under SEPA, there is not that broad coverage. There are established SEPA exemption levels in state law, meaning that there are certain developments under a certain number that are not even reviewed under SEPA. So there's no opportunity to capture the mitigation for any public infrastructure. And so that one, that one lot owner with one building permit need would walk into the county and would not have to have any school mitigation requirement. And that's an important reason why school districts want their jurisdictions to adopt school impact fee ordinances, because it provides that broad coverage for all of those units, which as a whole, incomprehensibly and cumulatively, really do add up. The district, as I've mentioned, has asked Franklin County regularly to adopt a school impact fee ordinance, and the renewed request was submitted back in 2018 when the district adopted its updated Capital Facilities Plan. Franklin County has declined to date to consider that, and so the district's only avenue has been through that SEPA process. And I've been working with the district for about two years, and so I know that prior to 2017, there were efforts to collect school mitigation in Franklin County, but they weren't successful, and they were based on more of a trust relationship that we, when we came in and looked at it, decided that we really wanted to establish a process and procedures for the district to, early on in the development review process, establish and commit to school impact, to school mitigation fees on the behalf of the developer. And so what we have in place currently is that Franklin County provides notice to the district, as well as to the city and any other public agency provider, of any proposed new development at the earliest point in that process. So when it's ready to start going through SEPA review before it has went through a preliminary plat process. Now again, keep in mind, this is for those developments that are actually subject to SEPA review. If they're not subject to SEPA review, the notice isn't being sent out, and there's no authority under which the district can reach out to try to secure school mitigation. But where there is, the district provides a comment letter to the county, identifies, based upon its Capital Facilities Plan, the impact of that development on school facilities, identifies the fee, which is equal to what the fee is in the city of Pasco, that should be assessed, and asks the city to, or excuse me, asks the county to condition the SEPA on that school mitigation. As a security, the district at that same time files an appeal of the project, a SEPA appeal of the project, and essentially preserves its rights should the county decide that it's not going to add that condition. And it's entirely up to the county as to whether they will add the condition. We've had five projects come through in the last two years using this process. All five of those, the developer, once they have seen that the SEPA appeal is filed, has come to the district, has asked to enter into an agreement for the purpose of avoiding the appeal. And the safeguard that we have in place now, which was not in place in 20, prior to 2017, is a school mitigation agreement that is signed by the district and the developer. It's recorded on title. It's an enforceable agreement, and it essentially requires that the developer will pay the school mitigation fee at the time of building permit issuance. We've also asked the county to record on the face of the plat a note that recognizes that school mitigation agreement and that same requirement. They have been doing that, at least on the plats that we have reviewed recently. And so, but even if they didn't, weren't doing that, there still would be that enforceable school mitigation agreement that runs with the land. The additional suspenders to that belt is what was, in which the district has really been appreciative, is the city's own efforts through the water connection that developers in the unincorporated areas come to the city to get approval for. The city is conditioning that water connection on the payment of that school mitigation fee. So it's cross-referencing what the district has already secured through the SEPA process. And again, it's a nice suspender to that belt. So that is the end of my presentation, but I know you'll have questions, so I'll pause.
Questions, discussion? Mr. Alvarado?
Yeah, just have a quick question. Thank you for your presentation. Do we know what the threshold is for triggering SEPA? Is it the size of a project, or?
It is the size of a project. The county's exemption level is 20 units. So if it's less than 20 units, they are not reviewing under SEPA. Now, we do have some ability through the Subdivision Act to try to get through the back door on that, but it's not as straightforward.
And so the county determines their own threshold?
They do. State law establishes minimums for jurisdictions, but they also, so they set a floor. Typically, it's four dwelling units or less for single-family, 20 dwelling units or less for multifamily. But they also establish a ceiling that allows local jurisdictions to choose to go above the minimum, and Franklin County has went to that ceiling.
Thank you. Other discussion? The question I have, and it's still the same one because I've not heard anything new this evening from, different from the previous meeting, other than I do see that you're navigating legal waters as an attorney very well, but I'm still not seeing the principle that the school district is interested in fairness for all development in all of the jurisdiction. What I'm seeing is that Pasco is not only, not only did we, a number of years ago, take what I think was a very bold and courageous stand to support the school district under the trust that all would pay the same amount, and then when that didn't prove to be true, we've seen this case of where there is a lot of holes in the process. And while I'm heartened to see that there is an increased awareness and tightening up of those exemptions, I still have not seen the school district say the fundamental words, "We're interested in fairness across all of the district, whether it's city or county." And that I'm having, I still have heartburn with. So that's, that's still not been answered this evening, and I would love to be able to say that we are in support with the school district, but I still need to see that. And I'm not sure if that's, I know that you're the attorney, and I've also know that the superintendent has been working on that as well, but I, I'm wondering when that question gets answered. Do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, so I could address that, and then if the superintendent wants to add any more. But the district is absolutely pursuing every possible legal avenue to ensure fairness across the system with regard to new development and the payment of school mitigation. And there are only certain steps that the district itself can take to, towards that end. If the district itself could assess school impact fees on new development within the entire district, they would certainly be doing that. The Growth Management Act does not allow them to do that, so they rely upon the local jurisdiction. They have made that request to Franklin County regularly, and absent Franklin County's movement on that, have now put in place a process where, to the extent they have a legal avenue to pursue school mitigation, they are pursuing it aggressively and are well-prepared. We haven't had to do it yet, but they're well-prepared to actually go in with an appeal should a developer refuse to enter into a school mitigation agreement, should that not be a requirement of the county. And so it is, it's an imperfect answer. I absolutely acknowledge that. It's an imperfect system because there is only so much that the school district itself has the ability to do, and having to rely on that other jurisdiction hamstrings that in a way that is not complete mitigation.
And I'm going to say it again because I don't think, the point that I was trying to make, apparently was clear. I'm not talking about the legal course. I'm talking about the policy course in interest in fairness. And I, and you can outline as tight a legal case as you want, I've still not heard the school district is, has a policy statement that they will pursue fairness. That fairness isn't just by legal means, it's potentially by policy. It may also be a matter of the school district saying, "You know what? This is a problem. School District Pasco, let's go to the legislature and get this fixed. And maybe this is more, maybe I need to be talking to the school board about this," and I understand that. But I've been trying to make this point, and I thought effectively, here for some months, and I know that Mr. Martinez and other council members have shared that point, this isn't about the legal process. We've been, in fact, more than happy to help out with that, but it's the policy principle that we're not just the ones doing it in Pasco, that everybody needs to, should buck up and be part of the fair share for the impact fees. And I'd love for the school district to be a partner in that policy and principle, not just legal, legal course.
So thank you, Mayor Watkins, for the opportunity to be here tonight. I do have to say, it's a little bit surreal being at someone else's board meeting, so I welcome the opportunity. I feel like it is my obligation to you as a partner, as the city, to absolutely speak to the principle and policy piece. We 100% are about fairness and equity across our programs and policies, and this is no different. So certainly for us, the most urgent need was to take care of the pieces that Mrs. Stifarm has outlined tonight in terms of policy and legislative advocacy. As a district, we are 100% willing to engage in that, in the extent to which you as council members are willing to partner with our board members in legislative advocacy. I know that their interest is very similar to mine, and that that is equity in acts, or equity and applicability across the district. So again, I appreciate your willingness to have us here tonight, and again, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
What could we expect to see, an affirmation of that from the school district then, in written form?
Sure. Certainly.
And I'll be quite blunt, if I see affirmation of that, all of this is really easy for me to not only support, but I'd even then question, wonder about the discount process and whether or not things need to be adjusted. Because I'm also aware, historically speaking, that this is, a lot of this is related to I-747 and the principle that the 1% property tax limit, which is especially difficult for a school district to do because they're much more property tax, or property tax-bound, and that's not even in keeping with inflation. So I remember 2012, and I remember 90, late 90s when that was adopted. This is increasingly a difficulty for the school district, and I want to help out, but I want to know that the school district is interested in everybody paying their fair share. And that's, that's really the only issue that I have at this point. So I appreciate you taking that back to the school district, and hopefully we can see that as part of an update, I think, in the 2019. And I'm not the only one, probably. I see Mr. Maloney has some thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much for coming out. I want to amplify a little bit and make specific the mayor's comments on this. We understand that you're at, that you're a staff level, and yes, you implement the policies as outlined by the board. When is the last time that the school board has had an opportunity to discuss this and in specific direction of ratifying that this is something that's important to them? And when's the last time this was discussed as elected, as their elected body in this? We are elected officials, you are speaking to elected, so it's one thing to hear from staff, and it's deeply important to make sure those workaday details are done. But we're looking for additional commitment from the school board, not just from staff.
So the school board interacted with the update that you got in May, so there was an engagement of the school board at that time. So there is a pretty deep study and influence into that process and practice as we're developing the Capital Facilities Plan. So that would have been the last time the school board engaged with this material.
Thank you.
But we do so regularly. And, and as a result of this meeting, I'll definitely be engaging with them around your request for the policy-level guidance and statement of equitable application.
And of course, I'm using my position as mayor to talk. I do, I do not also necessarily represent all of the council members too. So if anybody has any different thoughts, I want to make sure that this is something that the group is in support of, generally speaking, as well. And I'm seeing a couple of nods. I've not run too far afield on my request then, I'm hoping. Okay? Any other thoughts? Well, and once again, I know that we have a deep commitment to the Pasco School District, want to do even more, making sure that the folks in our community are educated as youngsters and become productive members of our community. It's part and parcel to what the city is involved with, and we're going to keep being a partner, but we want to make sure that we're, that we're rowing the same direction if we can.
Thank you, Mayor Watkins, and members.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. I guess time-wise too, you mentioned probably doing some updates to the material, your expectation, timeframe?
Yeah, we anticipate that the board will probably see this sometime in August, early September, and then it would thereafter, assuming board adopts, would then immediately be forwarded to both the city and to Franklin County for that update process. So early fall, and understanding that you all have a busy fall, so we'll get it as soon as possible.
We'll look forward to an update.
Okay. Thank you.
With that, we keep moving on the agenda. We go to item C, code amendment, minimum lot size and frontage in R2 and R4 zones. Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Currently, all of, well, let me backtrack just a little. Last week, council passed a, or last council meeting, there was an ordinance passed that allowed for lots to be created without public street frontage. This proposed ordinance talks about those lots that have public street frontage. Currently, all lots require 60 feet of frontage, regardless of zoning district and lot size, at least if it's under 10,000 square feet. So the proposed ordinance would establish lot frontage requirements along a public street that's more in proportionality with their lot size. So you'll see a reduction in many, in all cases in that regard. And at the same time, it would reduce the minimum lot sizes in the medium-density zoning districts, the R2, R3, and R4 districts, for single-family developments, and in the R2 district for both single-family and multifamily developments. This keeps us more in line with our neighboring communities. The Planning Commission spent a number of workshops on this item and conducted a public hearing, and has forwarded a recommendation of approval. I think the best summary of the ordinance's proposed changes is on the second sheet of your agenda report, where it describes what occurs in both, in the R2, R3, and R4 zoning districts. You'll see that the lot frontage in the R2 district is reduced from that blanket application of 60 feet down to 50 feet, and the minimum lot size for single-family homes is reduced from 6,000 to 5,000, and then a similar 1,000-square-foot reduction in multifamily dwellings. And that pattern is repeated for the R3 and R4 zoning districts, both in terms of lot frontage and the single-family requirements. So overall, it's a general 1,000-square-foot reduction in lot size, and then a proportionate reduction in the frontage requirements so that you don't end up with very long, very narrow lots, lots that are more geometric, more square.
Questions, discussion? Mr. Alvarado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. White, for bringing us up to speed with this, with this issue that, with this item that has been brought to the Planning Commission. Was there much discussion about the impact on parking, especially as it pertains to multifamily, and how it would impact availability of parking on a front?
There was considerable discussion, at least at the staff level, regarding the frontage requirements in parking. Currently, each home in Pasco, each dwelling unit, is required to have two off-street parking spaces, so that still applies. And then, aside from the minimum requirement, no, there was not an effort made to revise any of the off-street parking requirements.
I know that an issue in our community, certainly in the east side, is parking, and a lot of this because of perhaps the density, or perhaps the number of folks living in a specific unit, and so I know that that's an issue. in a specific unit. And so I know that that's an issue that I hear on a pretty consistent basis. And so I'm just curious if that was something that was discussed, so that, and if there's a way to mitigate that, or if that's appropriate, perhaps more about the multi, multifamily. Again, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but I'm just curious if, how much conversation was about that.
And, and I, I hesitate to suggest, because I don't know the answer either. I know Pasco actually has parking requirements that are greater than our neighboring cities, even in the multifamily zoning districts. At, at times, it still seems to be a problem. I think as we look forward to our comprehensive plan and the mixture of land uses that we anticipate, particularly in the expanded urban growth boundary area and our Broadmoor area, you'll see less reliance on personal vehicles, and maybe a little more reliance on other forms of transportation, so that maybe in time, it's appropriate to look at parking requirements again.
Thank you. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. White. Question for you, several questions. So in the planning, in the meeting minutes from one of the Planning Commission meetings, there's a discussion that this fundamentally reverses ordinance number 4173, which was passed not too long ago, I believe in 2014, again, according to the agenda packet here. What, what was their thought process from then to increase the requirements, and then so relatively recently afterwards, decrease them back to what they were? That's, that's, that's recent memory here.
Yes, it is. The thought process for the increase in lot sizes was in response to a particular development that occurred on the east side of Pasco. And it was put in place to prevent a poorly designed plat from ending up as poorly designed as we had anticipated. And in that sense, the requirement worked. It prevented a very bad design subdivision from occurring. It still occurred, but the design was at least tolerable. So it was a reaction to a specific development back in 2014, which increased the lot sizes to what they are now, that we're proposing to, again, decrease to what they were before.
Do we have other measures in place to prevent the original issue that we changed this ordinance for?
I, I think we do. First of all, the frontage requirements were changed, or are proposed to be changed, for starters. And then we have a, you'll notice in the proposed ordinance, you'll see minimum frontages for lots on cul-de-sacs with minimum widths measured at the setback line. Those are new requirements. We did not have those in place in 2014.
Excellent. Thank you. I, I dislike reversing what we just, what I feel like we just passed, if, without a, without a very good reason for that. So I appreciate that background, and certainly sounds, it sounds like it makes, makes some sense. What discussions have been had with our, the developers that are building or intending to build in Pasco, and with our neighboring cities? What, what, what larger community conversation have we had about changing some of these standards?
I've personally talked to the Home Builders Association about, actually several require, several code changes that are coming up. The one last council meeting, this one in particular, and then several that you'll see in a, in a couple of meetings here. The development community, for the most part, is in favor of increased flexibility. That's, I mean, you know, that's what they do. And they're very supportive, and have actually proposed to help assist in whatever way they can, so that we can take additional steps to look at additional flexibility, which I think is important, particularly as we get to the point here in Pasco, where the easy, easy land to develop is gone, and the, the more challenging properties are left. So we're looking at a couple of things, height requirements in particular, the requirements for planned unit developments that aren't widely used. Actually, they're not used in Pasco at all, because they have some very outdated minimum requirements that have to be incorporated. But those two in particular, I think, are important tools to allow the development community to take advantage of some of the flexibility that we have inherent in our zoning code.
Great. And then my, my, my last question is in regards to our neighboring cities. I see also in the, the report from the Planning Commission that we're looking at, you know, Kennewick, Richland, Pasco, all have similar intentions. We're similar communities in many ways. But our requirements, both for minimum lot sizes and frontages, are, are divergent in a way that I can imagine makes, for a lot of headaches for some of our developers who build in, in any or all of our communities. Are we looking at trying to align in any way, shape, or form with our neighboring communities, and make sure that we have more of one, one regional set of standards when, when appropriate? Obviously, we have different requirements, and there's different direction we'd like to take things. But when possible, are we having that conversation?
I don't think so much in terms of minimum zoning requirements. We all, of course, have the same building code here in the state of Washington, but not, not so much zoning requirements. We all are very similar, I think. In, at, at the end of the day, you, you might find small differences, both in fees and in requirements. But I think we're all generally in the same ballpark. And I haven't heard the, the industry bicker too much about the individual differences in jurisdictions.
So I'm just looking at, for example, our high densities, 4,000 minimum lot size, and 50 minimum feet for the frontage. And then Richland, for their multifamily, is 4,000, and then 42. That difference of eight feet, is it, what's, what's the value in that? And, 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 you know, as for instance, or, you can, you can just look at the tables in this agenda, and you can see that there's differences. I don't know if they're material, I'm not a developer. But it seems like if we could standardize in some fashion, that would be a, that'd be a worthwhile goal, to see if we can try to be more, speak more as one voice with those fellow, fellow cities, when, when appropriate, and when it's not, you know, actively against Pasco's best interests. So that'll be a statement I'll make there. Thank you.
Mr. White, a question I have, so, let's say we do drop down to 5,000 or 4,000, or 6,000, down to 5,000. We've got a lot of existing places that have been zoned for that, and the collector network and the, and/or at least the, the major arterials have done and expected. If, with that increased in, in density, what's that going to have? Was there a discussion on the effect that that could have potentially on traffic?
Well, we had that discussion indirectly, and, and maybe this gets back to what some of Mr. Maloney was even talking about recently, or just a minute ago. But the Pasco plating pattern, particularly in the earlier platted portions of the city, were based on 25-foot lot grids. And I believe that's different in Richland, which is where you get that weird 42-foot thing instead of 50. But often, the 25-foot lots then allowed 75 people to buy three lots and put a home on 75 by 100. That was their typical measurement. And then, or 50 by 100, or, you know, not, not often, of course, 25 by 100. But I think that, the density increase is not going to be so great that we're going to have infrastructure issues, certainly not in the utility system, and it's doubtful on the transportation system as well.
Well, and, well, I'll say it the other way. If we were to increase the size of lots, that you're saying that, then wouldn't have an impact. I mean, I, my understanding is, if you've got 100 houses, and they're 1,000 square feet less, then you're going to be able to put in an extra couple of houses that are going to have X number of trips per day, and burden potentially is going to have that many more cars on it. So if we're already having problems with that, you're saying that there shouldn't be any appreciable difference if, if there are more houses in, in an area?
Apprec, yes, yes, that is what I'm saying. I don't think appreciably we will see a difference. The, the volume is not going to be increased so much based on the small increase in density. It's just going to make it easier to utilize space more effectively.
Okay. Because I can, I can see the lot, front lotted, the frontage as being the similar sort of concept as what we did last week with flag lots and all of that. But the changing of density, putting more in, I, I'm having trouble imagining that that's not poor, more houses per, per development or per square mile, that then affects the, the road network. So even if it's, even if it's making it worse a little bit, it is an increment, it would seem to be an incremental increase. So you're saying, though, that there shouldn't be an increase?
No, an appreciable increase on, that's what I'm saying, yes. There should not be an increase that's going to reduce service levels to the point where we have issues.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Hearing none, then I guess we're going to put that on the agenda for consideration. And also, I appreciate to staff reminding us about what we did in 2014. There was a story and a half there. And appreciate that we're not under, we're not having to, we'll undo a thing that was reactive, but necessary for the time. With that, we're through section C. We go to item D, housekeeping ordinances, criminal offenses. Mr. Ferguson?
Thank you, Mayor. This is your biannual criminal code updates. We try to kind of store these up over the course of the year. We get requests from our prosecutor for certain updates to our code, and so that's what you have with these two. The first one is the update to the simple assault ordinance that we have. And this one is necessary because the way that it's currently drafted, under 915030, simple assault, has a subsection A. And that subsection A talks about the definitions of use of force and how those are defined under RCW 9A16020. I will not drag you through that provision, but essentially, it is all the defenses to assault. And so the way this is drafted, it's a bit problematic because it seems to imply that the prosecutor has to be able to show by proponent of the evidence that the, those defenses have not been met at charging. And so that is a potential problem that the court has expressed some concern with. It, obviously, we, we feel like it's, it would pass a challenge, but it, it's problematic, and so we want to clean it up. It also would match, if we strike that, that A, it would do two things. It would match up our subsequent domestic violence assault provision right after that at 040, as well as it would not try to attempt to define use of force, which is actually defined in common law and not in statute. So that, we, we don't want to get into that business of trying to define that in our code. We want that to stay in the purview of the courts. So that's the, the first one. The second one is a little more of a, to, to use the phrase that's already been used tonight, a little more of a belt and suspenders with regard to unmarked cars. The statute is a little unclear about whether this is required for us to be able to use unmarked police vehicles for what you would refer to as general undercover and traffic control. So it's not quite clear. Some, there's a couple of different ways that that's been argued. And that's kind of been a little bit of an issue some folks have raised. And so our prosecutor requested that we go ahead and codify that, so that there's no issue. So that's essentially the two we have for you in July.
Questions? I do have one. So the principle of police cars, the, and this might be a question for the police department, is the general policy, though, if you're going to do traffic enforcement, would you prefer to use a marked car? Or does the police department prefer to do unmarked cars so that they're not spotted? If it's a case of the latter, I guess I'd, I'd have a, I guess I would have concern. And I think that's probably some of the issue, and the principles of policing, is that traffic enforcement, we, there's a, I would imagine there's a body of thought on that subject.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. So I think the clarification with that law is to give us the latitude to deploy multiple resources, whether we're doing undercover work, traffic enforcement. We want to be able to use both marked and unmarked. The majority of what we do is in, in the marked units for traffic enforcement, for visibility. But there are those times and their needs when you want to use an unmarked car. Or you maybe have somebody in an unmarked car that observes a violation, you certainly wouldn't want to prohibit that person, that, that officer, from taking enforcement when needed.
And, and I think the latter part is, is fine. Can you give a specific example that you would want to use an unmarked car in, in traffic enforcement?
Absolutely. We could have a complaint of, of a violation in a neighborhood area, and the marked patrol car stands out like a sore thumb. But we're getting complaints that we need to get some enforcement up in there for safety reasons, and we want to get up there in an unmarked car, where we're not easily visible to the violator, and we can effectively make, make enforcement.
And I'm going to take a risk. Big game hunting for some of the habitual offenders that, that are particularly good, and still want to get them a, get a, get a ticket to them that, say they deserve one?
Yes, for enforcement in those areas, yes.
I appreciate the specifics.
You bet.
Other questions or discussion? Put that then on the agenda for consideration.
Great. Thank you.
With that, we keep moving on. Pasco modal, multimodal update. And I know that Mr. Ratkai is learning a lot about our multimodal facility.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Good evening. Zach Ratkai, Director of Administrative and Community Services. Now periodically, the ACS Department has taken initiative to update the council and the viewing public on the various facilities owned and managed by the city. I'd like to take this opportunity this evening to provide an update and outlook on the Pasco multimodal facility. Pasco multimodal facility, or as more commonly known as the Bus Train Depot, or Transportation Depot, if you're looking at the sign, was built in 1998 to replace a decidedly outdated train station, which remained standing in a location about three blocks south down the tracks from this facility, until it was demolished in 2009. Construction of this facility was primarily funded through federal funding that was funneled and facilitated through the state of Washington, in addition to state transportation improvement, or STIP, funding, with matching funds coming from the city of Pasco and the Ben Franklin Transit Authority. The facility is open 24 hours a day, with the primary tenants being, primary tenants being the Amtrak Empire Builder Train, Greyhound Bus Lines, and the Missioneros Bus Lines. Leases that we currently have with these three tenants, the lease with Amtrak will run through February of 2024. The Greyhound lease runs through October 2023, and Missioneros runs through the end of 2019, with an option for a two-year extension. Ridership on Amtrak has been steady for the past couple of years. However, it saw a 6% decrease in ridership between 2017 and 2018. At the time of tonight's meeting, requests for ridership numbers from Greyhound and Missioneros, and the other bus services, have remained unanswered. But as soon as we get that data, we'll provide that with council as we analyze the usage of this building. From a financial standpoint, the facility is funded annually through, primarily through our lease revenues and the general fund. Beginning in 2016, the state, and this is the state of Washington, program multimodal transportation tax fund had also provided, it began contributing significantly to the facility's annual revenue numbers. The projected budget for 2019 shows revenues being just shy of $190,000, with expenses being just over $67,000. 2018 shows a beginning fund balance of 290, or $289,000. And 2019's beginning fund, fund balance came out to nearly $350,000. This year, as you can see from the graph, 300,000 of our, $300,000 of our multimodal fund balance will transfer to the street fund as part of a funding mechanism for the overall transportation plan. Additional fund balance at the end of this year is projected to be about $163,000. This will be retained for contingent operations and maintenance costs that may occur beyond the budget. Or in other words, a savings account set aside for emergencies and unforeseen capital repairs. If you look at the 2018 expense numbers, our expenses were higher in 2018 because the city renovated the restrooms and updated the restrooms in the facility, as well as painted the interiors. So those were some capital repairs we had going on at that time. So, oh, here we go. In the coming years, ACS and the rest of city staff intend on providing the same level of continued service to the facility, while assessing the improvements needed to keep it secure and safe for the general public. We'll also be forming and continuing our great relationships with our tenants and the, the transportation providers that occupy this facility. In addition, we'll be looking to promote this facility further in our partnerships as another great regional resource to meet our ever-growing transportation needs. So on behalf of the Administrative Community Services Department, we appreciate this opportunity this evening, and we'll take any questions or comments at this time.
Questions, comments? Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Ratkai. And I thank you very much for getting back to me on the questions I had. They were extensive, and you worked in quick order to answer them well. So appreciate that.
Yes.
And I can't see who's on the light, anybody. I'm not seeing lights on. Question I- Question I have is, so, well, there was a significant jump in state funding, and my understanding is we have some fungibility and it would be applicable and reasonable. So there's a, seemed to be a one-time transfer of a significant amount of funds to our street program. You also mentioned Ben Franklin Transit as being an early stakeholder in that group, and I don't know if they have talked with you, there's potential for Pasco, we currently have a, I think if we went back in time, there was hopeful to have a transfer station at this place, it made sense. But I know there's renewed discussion on whether or not to go from the one transfer station we have as Pasco's grown to two, more on the western and the eastern side, so that could become a part, a discussion point again. If it's not this facility, maybe there's something more, but is that something that you've been, your staff have been talking with Transit about and possibly in the future?
During my tenure here with the city, we have not had that specific discussion, but there certainly is the opportunity for that.
Not with respect to the multimodal facility, but certainly we've had conversations about an eastside major transfer station and relocation from the current one at Courtin 21.
And if, with a personal request, since I'm on the Transit Board and Mr. Alvarado's backup, is this particular presentation, including the numbers slide that you had, if that's something that you could share with BFT staff?
Certainly.
As well, we appreciate, I would appreciate that.
We can do that.
Thanks for the informational update. With that, I think we're through Section Four on the agenda. We go to Five, miscellaneous discussion. Mr. Zabel, do you want to start?
Yes, I did have a couple items tonight. One, just simply note the Fourth of July weekend, we had about, I think, 27,000 spectators and about 90, which is up from previous years, we, about 90 entrants to the parade, which a little bit down from the years, those things kind of fluctuate, a lot of competition, particularly when it's on a weekday. And a number of council members were in there, I think that was a really great community event, car show, I want to say 60-ish, 65, 61 entrance, which bigger than I recall from last year, so that's a growing thing. And then something new was the motocross, folks out at GISA this time, rather than the battle of the band type entertainment that's been in the past. I think that was pretty well-received as well, so kudos to Zach and his staff and putting together a really great event for the community and all the volunteers that worked that event, certainly the Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast and all those great things, the regatta and so forth. So it was a great event for the community. And what I specifically wanted to talk to you tonight about, although, was fireworks. So fireworks, council recall, not that long ago, you lifted a, the ban on fireworks to allow state-approved fireworks, which basically are fireworks that don't explode and they don't go up in the air. So it's a pretty simple line. If anybody was outside their house in town over the last weekend, Pricke on the Fourth, and Councilmember Barajas and myself were both riding with the PD, and there was a lot of things going up and a lot of things exploding. So a lot of the use of, use of a lot of illegal fireworks in the community still. I think one of the exciting things was that there was a lot of use of legal fireworks, which probably hasn't been the case in the past because there really wasn't a place to buy them or a market to get them at. So this is very preliminary, going to give you some numbers tonight. We've really not had the time to evaluate them beyond today. And so we had a couple of comparative numbers there. Calls for service over the same period last year were up about 40 this year. Hard to say what the factor is that does that. CFS on the acronym there, it's Calls for Service. Citations, last year we issued 10, this year we issued 18, and warnings issued 54. And I'll note that, you know, having been out for about four hours between, you know, the peak time, between nine and about one in the morning, it's difficult when you roll up in a police car. People tend to scatter, you know, particularly when they know they're lighting off illegal fireworks. You know, so finding someone to write a ticket to, we found one gentleman, he had just lit off a series of Roman candles, and he was about three in, standing there right in front of the machine, in front of the display, and they were going off, pop, pop, pop. And he just hung his head because he knew he was, he was caught between a fence and his fireworks and had no place to go. It was almost comical, but anyway, we had 27 officers out along with nine reserves, so we had, I think, very well-staffed for the evening, but there was a lot of, a lot of things going on. My sense of it was, and all this is anecdotal at this point in time, is the Road 68 area, the neighborhoods on either side of Road 68 was probably the hardest hit in terms of the use of illegal fireworks. There was a lot of that up in that area, we heard a lot of calls up there. I was in the downtown area, and, you know, there were some, but it really wasn't, you know, I guess bad is relative. If it's next to you and it's your next-door neighbor, it's bad. But compared to some of the other places in town, I think the hot place was out at Road 68. Again, we generally found, and this is anecdotal from kind of a collection of police debriefing and so forth, about 10% of the calls we received were related to legal fireworks. And the majority, the other 75, 80%, were for illegal fireworks. I don't think every call was answered in terms of a knock on the door, but I know we were responding to calls, may not have made contact with the reporting party, but we were in the neighborhood. And a lot of times we're in that neighborhood, at least the officer I was with managed to write three tickets, and he managed to do it by turning his headlights on, off, excuse me, off as we rolled up and kind of waiting and being silent. And sooner or later, somebody does something, you know, they come out and you have the opportunity to cite them, and that's kind of how that night went. So if you're, if you're a party that may have called, you may not have had someone at your door responding to you. So it may have seemed like you weren't responded to. I'm not sure how we get around that piece because when you're responding to a call and you're writing a citation, you're really not thinking about going back and figuring out now who called it in, because that involves dispatch and calls back and things like that, so. Folks, these folks I encountered, and I know Councilmember Barajas's experience was different, but the folks I encountered, they knew they were using illegal fireworks. And they weren't really squawking about the ticket when they got it, they knew they had it coming, they knew they were caught. I know a lot of folks probably didn't know, though. We had one person ask, why do we sell those if they're illegal? Right? We don't sell illegal fireworks in Pasco. The folks that had the illegal fireworks bought those fireworks outside of Pasco because the ones inside of Pasco had to meet our city regulations. So next slide is just a little bit of a sense of numbers, and you can see last year, number of incidents were quite a bit higher. We're back to kind of the norm we've had in the past, maybe even a little bit better this year. When you look at fires, we're down, and we had, and two of the fires were car fires had nothing to do with fireworks. And then EMS calls were down compared to years in the past as well. Difficult to say which are associated, because those are just total calls right there. And by reference, or by comparison, Kennewick, we had, we had 26 calls, Kennewick had 37, or excuse me, incidents, Kennewick had 37, Richland had 41. So the other tri-cities were pretty busy as well last evening. And then I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the outreach, and I know we did this before the, for the council, but I wanted to make sure you saw the plan, and we had shared that with you, I think, back in May, this was what the plan was. We did implement on that plan, and you can see some of the results had dozens of ads on Cherry Creek Media, which is three stations, including a Spanish-language station. We did print media, certainly our social media, we reached, just on our city Facebook, contacts 36,000-plus people, and you can see the numbers on shares and other places. Plus, there was a lot of, because of the lifting of the ban two years ago, there was still a lot of media attention on Pasco. There were stories about, you know, Pasco and what we're doing to prepare and so forth. So those were out there, and a lot of information about what was legal and what's not legal. I think we all need to recognize that it takes a while for something like this to start to stick, you know, especially when you can buy it so prevalently outside the city. I think one of the things we need to look at next year is really encouraging people to use our vendors in the city to make sure they're getting the right package of fireworks that's going to keep them out of citation territory. So that's the extent of the data we have right now, and, you know, this just, obviously just happened last week. Plan on presenting a little bit more analysis, a little more granular data to council probably in the next two or three weeks. So if there's any questions, certainly we have folks from all the departments here that were involved.
Well, so now we've got two years of this newer policy on our belt. Your sense that we can, it's still not quite at a really managed level yet, but do you think year three and four, we're going to be closer to that?
Well, I think certainly our incidents of fires are way down, and the number of our calls, you know, you just look at the incidents, excuse me, I shouldn't say the calls, the incidents are less than what the other two, Kennewick and Richland, the other two comparable cities in the tri-cities, our size we're dealing with, or, you know, not statistically abnormally lower, but they are lower. And I think there's some things we can do. I'm reluctant to talk about that right now, we really need to kind of go through the data and look and kind of figure out if it is true, you know, what we sense that the Road 68 corridor was the most violations out there, why is that? We need to kind of look at, you know, what would cause that and how can, what can we do to change that?
Sort of hotspotters sort of.
Right, yeah, we need to be a little strategic about this now. Now we have some data and we can start looking at some cause and effect.
Thanks for the report.
Okay.
Other things?
That's all I had on staff.
Other miscellaneous discussion, council? Mr. Maloney?
Does it speak a little bit more on the fireworks? I know sitting at the stadium, waiting for the show to start, certainly the neighboring houses were, seemed very interested in rivaling the fireworks in the stadium, and certainly in the hour or hour and a half to hour leading up to it, they were, it was bad. I mean, it was, it was, it was so obvious that I feel strongly, and so constant, that we probably could have had an officer walk from the stadium into the neighborhood and hand out citations. So certainly I think targeting certain areas might be, might be a good way to change behavior at this point, things like that. I don't know what the right answer is, and I know you'll look into it further, but I know that sitting in those seats, it was, yeah, it was a, it was a little shocking, and it was honestly making me rethink whether or not we're taking the right approach at all, or whether should we go back to a zero-tolerance sort of policy. I was, that was, it was upsetting to me to see people so flagrantly violating our laws as we're trying to be more accommodating and more responsive. So that was, yeah, anyway, so that's just my two thoughts on sitting, sitting there in that seat. Thank you.
This is going to be one that plagues us for a while, I have a feeling.
Yes.
That said, any other discussion? Is there a need for an executive session this evening?
Not this evening.
With that, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming, and see you next week.